Several moments of silence this evening. First for Joseph McGuinn, the son of high school staff member Edward McGuinn. Linda Mallory, the sister of our school committee member Tina Supantus. And Evelyn Sylvester, the mother of our school resource officer Paul Sylvester. This is the March 22nd meeting of the Clinton School Committee. This meeting is being held both in person and remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter section 20. This remote meeting is offered via Google Meet technology. Can we have a motion to approve the bills?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes from March 8th, 2021?
So moved.
Motion having been made and seconded. Any discussion on the minutes from Marching? No? All those in favor? Also unanimous, thank you. For those of you watching, we have during this time moved our public comment below our reopening update as it has served us well. To answer any outstanding questions that might be out there. With that said, Dr. Meyer, do you have an update on the reopening?
Yep, thank you. So, as it's become sort of routine, we want to start by looking at our data. The most recent data released on March 18th by the state has our cases per 100,000 significantly dropped down to about 18.8. They've been hovering closer to 30, now 20. And our percent positivity dropping to 3.36, so the first time it's been in the threes since back in November. So, those are all trending, trending well. So if you, a couple pages pass, you can see the graph that we normally have and you can see how we're coming back down pretty much to those November, you know, end of October type of levels if we were up before. We have been in the yellow for the last two weeks and we've been in the yellow for three of the last four weeks. So, by all conversations with the Board of Health, the thought is that nothing has been seemingly changing and continuing with this trend as we keep going forward. Some of the current guidance today, we moved to Phase Four, Step One in the state. So that was announced a few weeks ago, but confirmed and then it happened today. The Clinton Board of Health has approved us bringing all students back since we're in Phase Four, so we have their blessing to bring all students back at this point. Commissioner Riley has ordered that all elementary schools since K to five are back to full in-person learning by April 5th. And that the middle school students would be required to be in in-person learning no later than April 28th. They have not come out with a date yet for when they're requiring high schools to come back. In terms of pool testing, we've been continuing that. It has been extended through April 18th by the state, so we can do it right up until April vacation for free through the state's program. If we were to decide to continue after April 18th, that would cost us approximately $5 a test. So we'll have probably the next school committee meeting, we'll talk a little bit about, are we deciding to try to feel that's valuable to move forward with that or not? As you can see, the first, you know, there's a history there, we've done four weeks of completed testing, we've had two positive pools. The first one on the 9th, we did not end up finding a positive individual. One of the, one of the people ask, how does that happen? One of the ways that this can happen is when you fill out the consent form for the testing, one of the questions is, have you had COVID-19, previously had COVID-19? And if you've already had it, you're not really supposed to participate in the, in the pool testing because it could show basically a false positive. That's how tests can show a false positive because you had it already and you're over it. So, one of the possibilities is that someone in that group might have had it and not even known they had it. So when they filled out the form, they said, they said no. So what will be interesting is we'll be able to get a little more data on that next week or tomorrow, I guess, when we do the testing because we'll see if it comes, because it'll be a different cohort, right? So it would be, should be back to that same group, so that should help us identify some of that. On our most recent testing on the 16th, we did have one positive pool as well. We were able to, we did do the follow-up testing and we were able to identify the positive individual and do our normal contact tracing and stuff from there. So, you know, like I said, it's good that we're doing this testing and that those are students who, you know, that was a student who, who had it and didn't know they had it and by doing this testing, we were able to try to, you know, have the student, you know, isolate so it didn't spread anywhere else. So, but I think also it's, it's good to realize that we've done, you know, over a thousand tests and we've had one confirmed positive case. So I mean, I think part of what it shows is with this kind of dipsticking that, you know, it helps us to, helps with some of the fear of the number of asymptomatic individuals that could be walking around in schools. So I think that's been one of the most valuable things of the testing so far. In terms of vaccinations, we did, I did a survey, I sent it out on the 17th to the staff, asking about their current vaccination status. It was, I didn't ask for identifying information, just pretty much, basically it was like what, essentially like what bargaining unit do you belong to and have you had a vaccine yet? So as of Friday, we had 244 responses. 61.9% of respondents have had at least one shot. So it's like 24.2 are fully vaccinated, 37.7 have had their first shot already, but they're waiting for their second shot. There was, there's an additional about 10% in there, a little less, it's like seven, it's published there, but it says like they, they have no shots, but they have their appointment already. 10.2 have, do not intend to get vaccinated this time for whatever reason. So really, if you look at it, we've got 21.7% of our population, so about 20% of our population, who still want to have the vaccine, but they have yet to book an appointment. So that's, so it's honestly better than I thought it was. I mean, I was surprised that there were already basically over 60% of our staff that had, had a shot already. I didn't, I didn't think it would have been that high. And I would say this data has to be constantly changing because I know I responded to this survey and when I responded, I was in that 21.7. And then I had signed up for the new state system on March 12th when it opened. And I got a text on Friday to schedule my appointment Friday, so I'm now in the, I have an appointment category. So, so I, you know, I think every day more and more people keep, you know, getting their appointments. Our return timeline, so this week, the green cohort has returned to full day, which essentially means, if you think about it, more than half of our students are back full-time. Because the green cohort that's back this week is, is back, right? There's no more green and gold next week. So if you're in the green cohort or if you're a full in-person student, you're, you're back for good now. Just a review of those times, they're slightly shorter than our normal school day, they're still long enough that we can make time on learning. But it was just with the staggered buses to keep the numbers down on the buses. And then beginning March 29th, all students who returned to full day. And we did vote at the last school committee to make the 29th and the 7th, they were originally half-day for PD, those are going to be regular days now that everyone will be back regarding the staggered, staggered schedule. Just some reminders, particularly for parents, is that this plan will use three feet as the minimum for social distancing while masked. So most of our classrooms have been reconfigured so that desks are at a three-foot distance. So that, that will, that is something they should know, it will be six feet if you are unmasked. We have, if you've driven up by here, you're probably seeing the giant tent out between the two buildings, so that's, that's been installed. I kind of found out a little bit after the fact, but we've got it permitted now too. So that's all set. We have two tents that are coming to an elementary school, those ones are rented, so those will be, those are coming, confirmation company that's coming at 9:00 on Friday to set up those tents. We have ordered additional dividers, they have arrived, so we had, we ordered an additional 300 dividers. We currently have 150 at the middle school, 150 at the elementary school. So those serve kind of two purposes, one is at their disposal, at their disposal for classrooms that they require them. So in the middle school, for example, some of the science labs, they're kind of setting them up so that they can try to get two people at some of the lab tables with a divider in between them. And it's also just for emergency situations, if we have total inclement weather or anything like that, if we need to kind of go into sort of Plan B or C for eating lunch, we have plenty of dividers to just sort of make it work. We'd rather have them on hand than have to wait for them. We did order, I mentioned before, water from seat cushions to help, you know, just more for the elementary school kids. So hopefully they can encourage them to go outside in the grass and sit down, even though it might be spring and it might not be real dry out. But we, those haven't yet to arrive, we hope when they come in this week. We did customize those, a little gale on them, so that added a little clean time, so. So that's pretty much the reopening update. The only other thing I had under reopening update I'm hearing here was the CTA MOU. So I know that wasn't in your packet, but it was like an insert in your packet, came in today. The MOU of the CTA, I was informed by the CTA president that this was approved by the, the union last week in a vote. So as long as the school committee kind of gives me the green light, I can sign off on this MOU with, with the, with our union president. I think it's, I think it's, once again, I mean, the process for creating this MOU was very amicable. I think it was, you know, an understanding that, you know, based on the guidance and then the way things are going, that this is something that really had to happen. So let's just look at what the new guidance is and let's articulate it so that we're, we can, we can make this happen. So I think it's been, you know, once again, another good working relationship with the CTA. And I guess I don't think there's anything in here that's very, you know, controversial either way, I think it pretty much updates the guidance. So if there's any questions or concerns in the MOU, I'd be glad to hear it. I don't know if you guys want to take a vote to reinforce it.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion right now to accept the memorandum of understanding between the Clinton Public Schools and Clinton Teachers Association. If we have a motion and a second, then we can discuss it if need be.
So moved.
Second.
Motion having been made and seconded, any discussion or questions for Dr. Meyer? Thanks, so, and I would echo my appreciation for the partnership between your administration and the teachers association. It's, it's been a consistent partnership from the beginning and I'm grateful for that. Any other questions or thoughts? No? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. So now is the time where we would typically have any public comment. Do we have it? For those of you watching at home, we start with public comment. For those in attendance, if there, there are none, then we can entertain any comments through the chat feature, Meet. Okay, public comments internally?
You want to do the chat?
No.
I don't see anything in the, nothing in the chat.
So, so I guess we'll officially close public comment at this time and turn it over to you, Dr. Meyer, for your report.
Okay, so we'll start with two, two staffing updates here, I guess it's really kind of three. The first one is retirement. So we have received a letter of, retirement letter from Cindy Dean. She just sent a very mixed emotion, she submitted this letter of retirement. She'll be completing her 39th year of teaching, the last 27 at Clinton High School. And boy, has it gone quickly, she said. She said, "I'm one of the handful of current staff who taught at Old High School and have worked for several superintendents, principals, and special education directors. Some of my coworkers were students at CHS when I began teaching there. I couldn't have taught this long without the joy that my students brought to my life. I always find a way to laugh and have a good time while learning. Such a diverse student population, I've learned a lot about many different cultures along the way. And of course, CHS staff is an amazing family, been a recipient of many, of many kindnesses and I hope to give back the pieces once I receive. I'm proud to have carried on the faculty gathering started with previous staff. Thanksgiving dinner is my favorite, a time for all the staff to sit for a few moments, enjoy some good food and conversation." The second is the three days of holiday treats in December. Come the end of August, I'm sure I'll be wondering what to do with myself because for the first time since I was a toddler, I won't be heading back to school. But I know it's time for me to step away and the young, energetic, creative teachers inspire our students. Our young educators bring a great joy to our building and our students certainly benefit from it. I can't think of a better place to be have taught in my career, Go Gales, sincerely, Cynthia Dean." I remember, I remember when I was teaching and Cindy was right down the hall and so it'll be, she'll, she'll certainly be misbewitched, sure will in retirement.
Indeed, thank you for your 39-year career for the children of Clinton, that is remarkable.
The next agenda item here, I have appointments. So we've, I have appointed two administrative staff members. So for the last, for this whole school year, Megan Silvio has been serving as the interim principal for Clinton Elementary School. And Alyssa Piermarini has been serving as the interim assistant principal. I know that Miss Silvio started as acting principal, literally like weeks before COVID shut down, a week before COVID shut down. And I think that, you know, her, Miss Silvio, Miss Piermarini, her, her other team members down there, Miss Riley, Mrs. McNally, they've done a great job throughout this entire challenging situation. And I think that they have, they've really kind of proven themselves in those leadership roles and they have the credentials to back that up. So we have actually agreed to three-year contracts with, with both women to officially kind of remove their interim title. And starting July 1st, there'll be the principal and Megan Silvio will be the principal of Clinton Elementary School and Alyssa Piermarini will be the assistant principal. I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing what they can do in a, in a normal year. It's been amazing, some of the things they've been able to do with our new literacy curriculum this year, focusing on professional development for universal design for learning. You know, in a time when a lot of schools are really focused just on, you know, getting through the day, we've still managed to try to, they've still been managing to try to, to move forward with, with the actual developing their staff and teaching and learning, and I think it's been, it's been great, forward to more years of it.
Well, please extend our congratulations to them, two excellent choices for, to add to your, to continue in your leadership team and wish them every, every continued success.
All right, another, I guess another fairly recent addition to kind of our, our central office team is our family outreach coordinator, Wadoube. She's here tonight to give a little bit of an update, she put a, you have a full update from her in your, in your packet. But you remember, she started right around, right after Thanksgiving. So it's been a few months now, so it's a new position, so we figured it'd be a good time to kind of tap her in and maybe say a little bit about some of the things she's been doing and what her role entails. So, Wadoube, I don't know if you want to walk over maybe where the mic would pick you up and if you want to share some highlights from your report or?
Right here, Rick.
Yep.
So for, for anyone who hasn't met me, I'm probably grateful. I came in, you know, like Steve said, I came in running, right, getting my feet right, right away. So it's been, it's been really, I don't know, it's been really busy, but also very exciting. And Clinton does have a really large, diverse group of students and families, so that was really, I, I knew I would, I should expect that. But a lot of the families and the need to have somebody that speaks two languages. And, and I've been just jumping in wherever I'm needed, working with principals. I did all the RITA training, so I'll be doing the access testing, interpreting, translating documents. But aside from that, just building a lot of community partnerships and becoming part of like, more part of the community, the community partnership team. And from there, I've made other connections as well and just putting things in place in Clinton that will help our families just feel very included. And, and just providing that communication in all languages, I think that is really important for everybody and just making them feel welcomed and included in all aspects of not only learning, but also building that community engagement. So I've been just trying to work with different groups. Last week I had this training with a social injustice group with different towns and some of the universities and colleges in the area. And just getting ideas on how to bring that to Clinton. And there's a lot of, I hope to continue that and just continue building those partnerships. And I did the community stewards training, I did a presentation and just attending those trainings and just seeing all the resources out there already that I feel like a lot of families are not aware of. Expanding the food pantry to the central office, we've already added quite a bit of families already that have been coming into the office there that didn't realize that we had a food pantry at the high school. So right there, that's just another, capturing those families that, you know, that we're really aware of, the, the resources already within the town. So my hope is to just continue the expanding the food pantry, expanding, you know, other areas that we need like the, like materials for students, clothes possibly, interest building that with, with whatever resources we have and the connections we have already. And there is a lot of, maybe a lot of like the small businesses can bring in a lot of those donations, so just capturing those. And I'm also part of the equity team, Steve kind of introduced me to that. So in the packet you'll see, we kind of, we have a draft of that new equity mission statement. And we really want to move forward with, with just building, you know, not for our faculty and our families and just having that inclusion and diversity that we already have and just expanding it more towards like a whole community thing. So my hope is that, you know, some of the goals I've listed on there, just continue with trainings and analyzing the school data. Making sure that everything, all our demographics are accurate because I think that's, that's going to help the district as a whole, just knowing all the demographic information and cleaning that up a little bit. Working with technology on a lot of projects and just getting, I know we're going to be getting a whole bunch of stuff next year. So I've worked closely with the technology department, working with the food service department as well, implementing the CBT program and getting more things in place for families and the district as a whole. And I can go on and on and on, so, but those are just some of the few things I think that are really important. And I just hope that I can continue to expand all those resources and build in those relationships with families and faculty and just work and continue to work as a team because Clinton does have a great team that go above and beyond. And they make it so easy to like create these partnerships, so I'm really grateful to be part of this team.
Thank you, thank you so much for, before you go. Thank you so much for this critical work. It, our school system is only as effective as our outreach to our families. And you provide an absolutely critical role in, in, in opening those doors. And we're incredibly grateful for your mission and, and all of the work that you're doing and all of the work ahead. Does anyone have any questions? No, welcome. Thank you, thank you so much.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I would just say one final thing, you know, when you start a, a new position, when you have a new position and you hire someone for that position, right? Sometimes you worry because you don't necessarily have like a, you know, you kind of have this vision of what you want it to be, but you maybe haven't articulated all the little details. And you, you know, and in the worst-case scenario, you get someone that basically like sits at their desk and checks her email until you tell them what you need them to do, right? I don't have to worry about that. I don't think she's ever at her desk, she's always meeting with somebody, she's always helping somebody, so it's great. So it's like, it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, you say something to Wadoube and she just runs with it, so.
I know, I'm now, like today, this morning, I was in, you know, I was at one of the other district placements and making those connections and helping our other district students. And just the need and just working with like BCS and just, you just forget like the areas, just the smallest transitioning, it's small, how grateful parents feel. But not only the parents, it's just these other places too that you make connections and so.
And I would say also, thank you, Dr. Meyer, for supporting this position. I know this is part of our strategic improvement plan and, and, you know, on behalf of all the families that you're currently working with and all of the families that you're going to continue to work with, we are, we are really grateful that you're in this position and it's you that's in this position. So again, thank you.
Excuse me, this is kind of my, I'm on the school committee office, but I'm a veterans agent here in Clinton.
You're what, on what?
A veterans officer here.
Oh, okay.
I want to email you this week because they have, they have over in Devon, they, they have a food drop-off once a week. And I drive over to pick up about 10 or 12 boxes of food and they drop off to veterans houses. But I had extra months ago and the school psychologist from Danielle Bailey in, in Little School, she gave me some addresses. So I, I just dropped them at their houses, it's much easier because they're bigger boxes. But also, over the years, we've had, through the Clinton Police Department, jackets, winter coats, I have no place to put them.
Oh, no.
No, that's why, that's why, you know, I'm going to email you. I was just sitting here going, I read myself, food coats are going to use, I'll give you a yell this week, so.
Yeah, hopefully.
So after we thank you for all of your hard work, Mr. Bailey's going to hand you more work.
No, 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 that's okay, because that's one of my biggest things, like creating like a central office, like a little department where like families just have everything there, food, resources, clothes, schoolmates, like any family, so we can capture it all and just hopefully we can just expand and just make those connections. And, you know, once one, it's a word of mouth and building the, the community partnership is really important. And hopefully we, once things start getting better, we can build more, like have like a community engagement where everybody can come and kind of like, kind of see what it's about. And we can build this together as a community.
That's, I'll give you a show. And one of the plans that we have, you can go back, but one, one of the plans that we have moving forward that you probably don't even know about yet is we are looking at trying to probably just shift our central office around a little bit. Many of you who have been in my office know that I have a full-size classroom as an office that I don't really need as much office space. So I think what I'm going to try to do is switch it around so that what's currently my office turns into more of a family welcome center. It's great, and that where that can be her home base, that way she has room for coats and food and computer setup and that kind of stuff. So, so that's, that's a project for the summer that we're going to have to talk to the facilities department about. Like that transmission, that transition there, the segue. So our next, our next guest tonight is our director of facilities, Brian Ferriger, so Brian, if you want to head over. Bri, Mr. Ferriger started the 15th, so he's got a solid week under his belt now. We wanted to give him an opportunity to come sort of introduce himself and, and see how things are doing, so.
Thank you for having, having me today. I haven't met any of you, but it sounded like Steve, Dr. Meyer said, I started last Monday. I have had the opportunity to, for all the schools and actually all the town facilities, met our staff, look forward to continuing to get to know what their strengths and weaknesses are. I think the schools are in very good hands with the, with the facility staff and the ground crew that, that are currently in place. And I know that they're prepping to do their part to get the students back safely on the 29th. So again, thank you for having me tonight, I look forward to working with all of you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ferriger? Yeah, you know, you obviously know you've got a big job ahead of you and, and again, we're, we're grateful to Dr. Meyer and to Mr. Ward and know that you're the right guy for the job. So we're, we're looking forward to all of the work ahead and supporting you in that work.
Oh.
Thank you.
Good job.
So, so one other sort of facilities note here is we do have, I do have a draft survey in here about middle schools. So as you know, you know, we did have that call probably a week or two now, go, a week and a half ago or so, we got from the MSBA. I haven't heard anything additional from them yet, which doesn't always mean anything good or bad, just means they're going along with their, their, their planning. But I did try to, you know, just start articulating some of the things that I think we need to try to take some input on. So I just started with a basic survey, what describes your role? Just sort of in general, do you support moving forward with the MSBA to address the fact of the facility? Just to try to, you know, get sort of a dipstick of the community based on, based on their role. You know, which type of project would you prefer to see? Basically saying, would you prefer renovation or a new building up here or a new building somewhere else or something? or something different? Some of the different configurations that have been thrown out, things like renovating the current building and keeping it grades five to eight, renovating the building, making it four to eight, building a new building for grades five to eight, building a new building for four to eight. Or potentially one of the things we talked about adding in addition to the high school. So that this is kind of like the one large building that would either be five to 12 or four to 12. So the idea was to try to kind of get some, get some people's ideas on that. So that we can sort of see what, what might have the most community support. You know, I think that it, I do think that, you know, if we're going to, if it, if we could find a way to make it so that we can get the fourth grade into the middle school and make it so that the facility had all the development appropriate things for fourth graders, I think that would probably help us out at the elementary level because it would allow more room for expansion for early childhood programming. But obviously we're a long way from that. So, you know, then two open answer, answered question, two open response questions. Please describe any specific improvements or features you'd like to see in a renovation or construction project. And do you have any additional comments or suggestions? What I struggled with with that is I wasn't sure if we wanted to kind of dig deeper and try to give them some, you know, maybe a prompted question prior to that, like with some general categories that they could say, like, these are the things that they think are concerning. Or if we just leave it to open response, we can discuss that more. And then obviously I got a subset here that we would need to form a building committee. If so, if we were invited, would you have any interest? And if you say yes, then you kind of sort of share what your qualifications are and why you think it'd be a good fit and some contact information. So this is just a draft. I mean, I'm not, I'm not anticipating sending this out in, you know, in the near and near future. But the, it might be something too that we might want to look to it through another critical lens and maybe one of the marketing subcommittee meeting if we want to, since we're kind of doing some community outreach to see. You know, a lot of the new building project comes down to marketing and communicating the message to, to all the stakeholders of, you know, what is it we're trying to accomplish? Why is this important? So it might be something we can review during that meeting and just sort of see if there's anything that we, we want to do. And then, you know, as that kind of goes along, then we can, you know, we'll see where, how that, how the MSBA process goes. And then we'll see what kind of urgency or, or time, you know, what, what general timeline? Is it something that we feel we need to expedite? Or is it something that we have a little bit of time and we can maybe just do it prior to? I mean, either way, we're still probably going to do it this spring because we really, if we got some information from a survey, it'd be good information to put it to the revised statement of interest for next year, even if we, if we do not get accepted issues. So.
Any questions on the survey? Comments? No. Okay. So the marketing committee will review this? Okay.
And then I think the next, let's see what we have here.
Calendar.
School calendar. So this is a pretty, pretty straightforward school calendar. We, I know we sent, actually I think, we don't, we haven't changed it at all, right? We did, we did a draft. We sent it to sort of the union leadership for input. We didn't receive any input. We don't miss if they had any comments or concerns with it. We didn't receive any comments or concerns. So at this point, I feel like.
It's our second meeting with the.
Yeah, it's pretty much that it is. So if you guys are comfortable, we can approve this.
Right. So we'll entertain a motion to accept the 21, 22 school calendar draft. And if it's seconded, then we can have any discussion or questions.
So I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Goodstall, seconded by Mrs. Pantis. Any discussion?
I'm just out of curiosity and I can't even remember because this has been on my mind if I asked before, but. Are we in a position to be able to allow a snow day to be remote so that we don't have to take the snow day anymore? Is that something that?
So that's, that's a good question that I will direct to the superintendent. I have my own opinions, but they are probably not as well informed as the superintendent. So.
I would say as of now, when they did make that, when they did make that clarification this year, they did stipulate that that ability to go remote during a snow day was specifically for this year only. So my guess is that that's probably not going to change and that they're probably going to want us to try to focus on as much in-person learning as we can next year, even if that means, you know, making updates like a traditional snow day. So I know that for a while there, there was sort of some guidance on like lizard bags and some, some schools that started moving forward with that. And then that kind of went out of favor sort of with the new, when the new commissioner came on. That was actually under the predecessor. And then this year there was the clarification that it was fine this year because so many schools being remote during the winter. My guess is it's probably going to, I would guess it's not going to be allowed next year. Could we do it? I think there was the infrastructure and technology to do it if that becomes sort of the, the practice. But I would say this year, even when we did sort of a remote snow day, you hear it from, you know, it's just one more thing that apparently now you're dealing with trying to like clean up snow and find coverage for your kids. Who's going to want your kids? And if you have to go to work and now you're trying to worry about who's going to log them onto class. So we heard some concerns about that. So fortunately we didn't have too many of those. You know, it would be nice to have it maybe as an option in the event of a storm that's long in duration or something like that. But even if you think back to, worst case scenario, I can remember from a weather standpoint was the, the ice storm. And even then you think, what kind of electricity and internet do we even have to do it during something like that, you know? So, so I, I don't, I still don't, I don't think snow days are going away. Unfortunately, I don't think snow days are going away.
Steve, you had a good question. I think it was last year at this time and it could have been, it was probably just prior to COVID when we were going through the same exercise. We tested out.
Early, like late arrivals and different things.
We tested, we tested out things also around like parent teacher conferences, right? And should we align time to give them like a day option versus an evening option? Did we land on any feedback on that, whether that was valuable or not? Is that something we should consider?
Yeah, I think at this point, we'll, we'll talk a little more about parent teacher conferences and stuff with our staff and how we want to go through with that. But, you know, to be honest with you with everything, we're down with the sheer schedule. I don't think we really had the time to sort of, to chat, to take on that challenge this year. And I think last year when we were proposing it, we were in a much different position. And we had thought, hey, these might be some cool things to try to provide, you know, access to parents who can't get there in the afternoon or can't get there in the evening. So I think it's something that we may want to, we may choose to revisit in the future. But I think in the, in the, just the timing of it right now, I think for next year, it's a little bit more of a traditional schedule. Thank you.
Any question? Anything else? No. All right. All those in favor of accepting the 2021, 22 school calendar? You dance. Thank you.
All right. FY22 budget updates. So right now it looks like the meeting with the finance committee and the selectmen. I think the finance committee is, is confirmed. The selectmen, do we know if they're confirmed? It's on. Okay. So we'll, we're definitely be meeting at six o'clock with the finance committee, possibly the selectmen. We know that they're invited. And at six o'clock on the fifth. So what we're going to do is we're going to meet them here. We've invited them to the auditorium. So they're going to come here so that we can do something. What I'll probably do, we're talking about today, is we'll probably have, you know, school committees, selectmen, FinCOP all sit in the audience. We'll probably try to move the mics. So maybe there's some mics. So each board kind of has access to a mic and then do sort of a overview budget presentation around six o'clock. Hear some discussion, thoughts, input from the boards. And then, and then technically that night at six forty-five, that's posted as our public hearing. So that's an opportunity so that anyone who would like to view the budget or, you know, anyone from the public that would like to comment on the budget can come and comment on that at that time as well. So it'll be a good opportunity. I think we get a lot of budget work done that night and it's sort of one, one kind of meeting. We'll have the preliminary review with the finance committee and the selectmen hopefully. And then some public comment, if there's any public comment. And then I would guess there's going to be some, obviously some recommendations or some information or guidelines that come from the finance committee as we go from there. And we'll probably have to make some final revisions into, into what, you know, what's our final budget going to be. But hopefully that'll be a good night for us to just kind of collaborate, make sure we're all on the same page and balancing sort of, you know, the school's needs and the town's needs. I think that that's the key to, to successful budget. The next bullet on there is the American Recovery Plan. We have not received any information yet on our ARP funding for the district. So if we remember when the first CARES Act passed early in the year, we got, we rewarded ESSER funds. And then that was, those were called ESSER funds that we got over last summer probably. And then the, kind of towards last fall, they passed another recovery package. We got another round of funding called ESSER two. And this is the third round of funding. It's the American Recovery Plan. I know that the, the state got their allocation of money. They got about 2.25 times the amount of money they got from the last bill. So if I remember correctly, it's something like, you know, the state got $800 million to distribute in the ESSER two round of funding. And now they're at like, you know, $1.7 billion that they got to distribute in this round of funding. So we haven't received any of the allocations yet for what that, what that translates to us. They did say it will be distributed using a title one formula, not a per pupil formula. Typically that means we will get sort of a larger portion than we would normally, than if they did a per pupil funding for distribution. It did say that one of the, one of the stipulations is that whatever your award is, they're saying right now 20% of that award is going to have to go directly to basic activities that address learning loss. So you're going to be looking at things like summer programming, possibly extending the school year, possibly extending the school day, running after school programs, those types of things. So I think we're going to have, we've already internally, our admin team has already been working on what, what those options might be, you know, what, what's the cost to add a day of school? What's the cost to, you know, extend the school day by a half hour, those types of things? And just trying to figure out, you know, what, what our options might be to try to come up with a robust plan for addressing learning loss. I think we are working on, we are working on trying to run some summer enrichment programming this year. Probably a truncated summer enrichment program for three weeks that we're going to try to sort of subsidize a little bit and try to increase enrollment for financial aid. Also make it longer and try to make it so there's some academic focus to those classes. And then we're looking at probably a couple of week program, two or three week program towards the end of July, early August, that we've already penciled in to try to look at sort of summer boost programs. And we can try to offer a minimum to targeted students, you know, depending on the staffing availability and the funding availability possibly to anyone that wanted to take it. Including one of the audiences we looked at was trying to come up with maybe a free program over the summer for our four-year-olds who are transitioning to kindergarten, who were unable to attend pre-K this year. Try to come up with something for them, even if it's only a three-week program or two-week program, just something to get them in the building and help get them acquainted, sort of a transition to K. So there's a lot of these conversations we've sort of had, you know, internally. Looking at things like for the middle and high school level, maybe supporting them with a late bus so that we could try to do targeted academic support and enrichment support. Maybe running some more like clubs and activities and things like that, the middle school after-student intramural type stuff. So that we can try to help students just sort of engage again. So. So none of those are firmed up. They're all, they're all random things on a dry erase board in my room with sticky notes and spreadsheets with approximate costs. But once we get an allocation and we get a little more direction, we know that's coming at us. So we'll try to keep finessing that and see how it goes.
Steve, just a quick question. As far as learning loss, I mean, naturally there's been lost time that we haven't had with our students from a typical perspective. But do you just delineate between how to fill the gap of lost learning to offer additional programs versus are there any requirements around in-person time that we're not able to meet going back full time? Right? So is the difference between the two, right? It would be, once we go back full time starting Monday, we should satisfy all our obligations around in-person learning as, as far as the state sees it moving forward.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. So this should be additional to say, hey, they've lost some time. What else could we be doing?
Yeah. We don't anticipate needing to do these things in order to satisfy baseline time.
This isn't a thing, this isn't like a Clinton thing based on our schedule. This is a, this is like a nationwide mandate that this money coming from the federal government, we understand that the federal government's saying, we understand that kids have had to bounce around. They were either remote, they were in hybrid, they were somewhere. So when you walk in next year, if your student was in second grade this year and they're in third grade next year, they're probably going to have gaps in their learning that typical third graders wouldn't have had a year ago or two years ago, let's say, right? So how can we say, you know, how can we look and build upon maybe whatever we did, what worked, what didn't work? You know, using probably, you know, some of the things that we will, like we used iReady this year, right? So we have this benchmark assessment that they're taking. So three times during the year, they're taking this assessment. We should have an idea of, you know, for our kids in grades K to eight, where were they at the beginning of the year? Where are they now? Where are they at the end of the school year? So we should be able to use things like the iReady data to say, hey, these are some kids that remote learning clearly didn't work for them, or the hybrid didn't work for them, or just the transition of going back to home didn't work for them. So maybe we need to target them to come in to try to get them up to speed so they can be successful for next year. And then I just think in general, you know, you look at things like, you know, just overall, how do you, you know, what are some of the strategies that they say, if you're, if you're trying to improve your school? You know, a lot of it is just increasing time on learning and, you know, trying to make up for some of that lost time on learning. And I think looking at all those little strategies of, but you had a couple of days to the year. So we go, you know, instead of 180, maybe we go a couple more. Could you add 15 minutes to the, a half hour to the day? If you add a half hour today to the day, that's 90 hours of instruction you pick up over the course of the year. If you break that down, figure there's about six hours of instruction a day, you know, you just got 15 school days added in, right? And it doesn't seem like that much, but it, but that's, that's a lot. So. So those are the kind of things that we've been looking at, trying to figure out. You know, I did a preliminary survey with the staff about, you know, who would be, you know, if, if given the choice between like adding school days or adding time to the day, what would you prefer? And would you be available to teach over the summer if we ran these, you know, just to try to get a dipstick of, you know, do we even have staff that would come in over the summer or are teachers like, hey, you know what? It's been a tough year and I'll see you in August. So, so it's still very, very preliminary. We're not, you know, none of this is set in stone. For all I know, the state could come out and they could basically prescribe what we have to do, you know?
And to be clear, we haven't gotten the money for it yet.
Different, right, right. It has not been allocated yet either. We're trying, but I anticipate that it's coming. And we're just trying to be prepared so that we know, you know, what we could, what we could do with that. So.
But most likely for any parent listening tonight, it would be more around the, of here's what we could potentially do for the summer or in the years moving forward, probably not something that would impact this school year between now and June.
No, I don't think anything is going to impact this school year between now and June because I think for, between now and June, it's just, let's get through the regular day. And let's make sure we work out all the kinks of five, five-day-a-week learning for the, not the end of the year so that there's not, you know, that the fall is going to be seamless, you know? So I think that's, that's, I think our primary goal to now and the end of the year by coming back is just make sure we get everyone back and we try to, you know, address, you know, maybe immediate concerns that we might find when that happens. And then hopefully a lot of this stuff would be, you know, once this, once this is hopefully eventually awarded and we have some of the more guidelines on what the restrictions are, we just want to kind of have these preliminary conversations, say, you know, scramble at the last minute. Be it like, uh, let's just add three days of school, right? We kind of thought about it and we figured, you know, these are, these are things that we think strategically would work well.
Yeah.
I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
Sorry. I do think it's important to have, and I don't know whether this is coming out of the Board of Education or the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, but some guidelines around what constitutes a need to offer this. No, no, you, I mean, I think there's a false narrative that throughout this year, every single child has suffered. And, and I, and I just, I, I think that's unfortunate. And it, you know, there are a lot of real success stories coming out of the remote models and the hybrid models and all of the efforts that this school district has made to provide options for students with high needs. And so I, you know, I, I bristle a little bit at, at the idea that we have to have a blanket system in place because every child has suffered irrevocable harm in their learning. And I just, I don't, it's not my experience that, that that's true. And, and it's not my sense that that's true. that, that that's true. And, and it's not my sense that that's true. And so, um, so, so I hope that, you know, however that this takes shape, that there's some metrics identified so that we're, we're targeting the options for programming for students that truly do need it and, and not just presuming everyone has to have some additional time.
And I would say definitely in our, in our conversations, um, internally as like admin team, uh, you know, we definitely talked about, you know, at the middle and high school level, certainly everything would be much more individualized, targeted, where we've really looked at, you know, what, um, in individual students, their grades, their, their gaps in the scene, really try to make it more focused. Uh, some of the concerns was more of some of the younger students and anticipation that, um, some of those, some of those students were ones that, you know, struggled a little more with remote learning because if you're struggling to read, it's a little bit more difficult if you don't have all the support. So, so I think that that's where we, if we were gonna do more, more broad-based stuff, I think it would be probably at the elementary school, which if you remember, you know, it seems like a while ago, but we are still working with the state because our elementary school is, uh, needs to do, you know, we're doing turnaround improvement stuff at the elementary school as well. So if there's strategies that are proven for turnaround and the strategies would also maybe work with, with, uh, addressing learning loss, it's like, why can't we dovetail these and use this as an opportunity to try to address all that in, in one plan? So, so I think those are all things. And I'm not, you know, and I go, we should probably pause this conversation before we get too far down the hole.
Yeah, no, it, it could take us into the weeds. I, 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 I'm obviously a strong proponent of the more, more time on literacy, the better across the board. Um, but that's all. Thank you for all of your members.
Uh, public hearing, April 5th, uh, prior to the regularly scheduled meeting. I covered that already with the FinCom and Selectmen. I don't really have any other updates on the budget this time. I just put that in there in case we did get, you know, in case the, we did get something from Boston or wherever, but we didn't really get any major updates from anyone. So I have nothing to share of that. Uh, fall two athletics. Um, as you know, I know I did the press release last week. We did have a member of the football program who, uh, uh, with a positive test. So I wanted some caution. We, uh, we started by finding, by trying to identify, you know, who would really be the close contacts of this person based on their role. And then by the time you start doing that, you realize, okay, at this point, we probably can't even, you know, you can't really function as a, as a team, which is kind of what we said in the, in the, in the winter season that really, you know, by the time you start tracing it all down, half your team's a close contact, a potential close contact. So we just basically made the decision to suspend football operations for the week. Um, we were out here Sunday morning. We were able to test, uh, uh, all the, uh, football players. Um, you know, their parents drove them out. We were at a drive-through testing line right out there and, and it was, uh, it was, it was great. Everyone who we felt, um, because everyone was accounted for in the testing. And, uh, you know, there were, there were a couple, I'd say a couple with ride issues or whatever that we're gonna do some catch-up with them, uh, tomorrow during the full test, the regular scheduled full testing. But for the most part, everyone that we felt was, uh, certainly anyone that was a potential close contact came, all that kind of stuff. So we, uh, we felt confident in that. It was nice participation in turnout. It was a nice chance to talk to a lot of the parents about what, what the plan was. So those, uh, those samples were sent to the lab this morning and a courier come pick them up. Um, usually if, uh, you know, it's supposed to be a 48-hour turnaround. So we're hoping we'll get them no later than Wednesday morning, but the lab will, they'll process it. They work, you know, almost around the clock down there, I think, right now. So we can get notification at 11 o'clock at night, you know, sometimes. So, um, so what we'll do is, uh, hopefully by Wednesday morning, we'll have the results. And, and if that's the case, uh, you know, based on our timeline, uh, we tested on Sunday because Sunday was the fifth day since, uh, since there would have been last potential exposure. Uh, Monday would be day six, Tuesday would be day seven. If you have a negative test, you can be cleared on day eight. So if you have a negative test on day five or later, which is why we tested on Sunday, you can be cleared on day eight, which would be Wednesday. So, um, if all the tests come back negative, we're hoping that we could resume football activities on Wednesday. We're supposed to play St. Bernard this week. Um, we've already talked to them. They are willing to work with us and just try to figure out, could we move the game? We're supposed to play Friday night. We're looking at maybe moving into Saturday so that hopefully our team can get back on the field for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, have three days of in-person practice before they play the game. I know they are kind of having Zoom meetings to go over things like that. In the meantime, like they had Zoom practice today or Google Meet practice, I guess, probably. So, um, so, you know, it was a, it was a, it was disappointing. I think everyone was looking forward to a football game on Friday. But, um, you know, I think what was nice is we had the pool testing. So we were able to come together and just make a, make a plan very quickly and, and try to execute it so that we can try to, um, keep everyone safe, but try to salvage as much of the season as we can.
Please extend our thanks to Mr. Smith. This must have been a nightmare to try and reschedule. I'm glad that we're consistent with where we've been in the winter season as well, but I, I'm sure it must have been a headache. Can I ask you a quick question? Just the, the, um, should, should I, should we presume that we're using the, the turf field at Neshova because it's spring and if we were to use the field here, probably wouldn't have a field in the fall?
That is, yes, that is, that is correct. However, the fact that now our, our home game that would have been at Neshova on the 19th is now most likely going to be rescheduled to the week six that was built in, means our last two games of the year would be our home games. Uh, so we are investigating that based on how that field, what condition that field is in by, you know, s- five or six weeks from now.
Right, and that would just be for the games that practice themselves?
Yeah, they're practicing on the field, you know, and that's not getting completely destroyed either. So I, I do think we might be in a position to play our home games, uh, here, now that they're gonna be at the end of the season.
Yeah.
If you think about like Friday, if we had, we played on Friday, you know, it was rainy, it was all, you know, it's like we might have absolutely destroyed the field and the grass isn't even really growing yet, you know? But in a few weeks, yeah, I think there is a good chance.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, I was just curious.
Yeah. No, believe it, we're all, we were thinking about it before, even if we, we figured we have to play the opening weekend in Neshova, but our, our, we were home the last week of the season and we figured we would try to hopefully monitor that field and get on that if we can. All right, I think that wraps up my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any, well, first off, uh, does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Meyer relative to his report? All right. Do we have anything new from our committees?
The marketing committee asked, we have a date from marketing.
Yes, we're meeting, uh, Thursday first.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, is, there isn't anything new from our sub, our negotiations subcommittee? Is there?
See, I mean, tomorrow we're gonna meet our next meeting scheduled for the first for that as well.
Okay.
Um, and I would guess I would say at this point that just we, uh, we did have a meeting already, so we're, so we are continuing with that. Uh, but under executive session, it does say that, um, it does have in there we'd go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations with the instructional assistants. Uh, I would say that I spent a lot of time on the phone today with our attorney, kind of reviewing, uh, that situation. I don't think that we are, I don't think there's a need to go into executive session today because I think we've fully, but kind of developed.
Okay, great. Uh, is there anything on the old business? Anything on the new business? All right, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion second.
Motion having been made and seconded. All those in favor? Hi. Thank you, everyone. We stand adjourned. Continued success with our.